I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. Review and approve the agenda. Any changes, additions to the agenda that anyone wanted to make?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we need to, I need to open the accessibility modification grant application hearing. And I'll just read the first page of it, and I think we've all seen it, but, "The town of Proctor is considering making application to the state of Vermont for a VCDP accessibility modification grant 2019 under Vermont Community Development Program." Public hearing will be held at 6:00 PM on September 23rd, 2019, at the Proctor Figueroa Library, 4 Main Street, Proctor, Vermont, 05765, "to obtain the view of citizens on community development, to furnish information concerning the amount of funds available and the range of community development activities that may be undertaken under this program. The impact of any historic and archaeological resources that may be affected by the proposed project, and to give affected citizens the opportunity to examine the proposed statement of the projected use of these funds." The proposal is to apply for $100,000 in VCDP funds that will be used to accomplish the following activities: Town office renovations. Copies of the proposed application are available at the Proctor Town Office, 45 Main Street, Proctor, Vermont, 05765, and may be viewed during the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. Should you require any special accommodations, please contact Stanley Wilber, Town Manager, to ensure the appropriate accommodations are made. For the hearing impaired, please call 1-800-353-0191.
253. Just want to make that correction. Sorry.
Yeah, no.
It's 253. He said 353. It's 253.
Yes.
The phone number. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, sure, thank you. Oh. I don't see any or hear any comments from... So, I guess... Move to conclude the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Review of September 9th regular minute meetings. Any additions, corrections? September 9th meeting.
I think I'd like to make a revision under something that seems like I've said something that I didn't say.
What page?
Um, page two. And what I commented on was that...
Number, are we on?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
It makes it sound like I said teens were speeding, and I didn't specify who was speeding. I just said there is speeding on Pleasant Street, a lot of it.
Move, we accept the minutes with the revision? Have a second?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Open public comment. Raymond, do you have anything?
Yeah.
If you would like to use the microphone here on the podium? Just so when they play this back...
You can drag your chair up at the end of the table.
Yeah, you can drag it. Well, if he has to stand there, maybe it'll be shorter.
What I want to talk about, I've been tree warding for quite a number of years, and we never seem to get all of it done. And right now, if you've noticed, Gorham Bridge, a lot of other roads, the trees are hanging way over the road, and this is all mounting up to a tree falling, possibly on somebody or something, and... I was wondering... You can't leave all this cutting up to the town crew, I don't think, because they have other things to do. And they might start it, and then something busts, they gotta go for three, four days, or a couple of days, and then you, you know, then you gotta start over. I was thinking of, sometimes like for three months of the summer, if we could find money for two good guys with a chainsaw, we could clean the town up. But that's just my thought, because it ain't getting any better. It's getting worse and worse all the time. And I guess there's a meeting somewhere coming up on tree warding. I'm not quite sure where it is yet, but... I think that a member of the board ought to go to it too. I'm going if I can. But that's my thoughts. I don't know where you're gonna get the money. I don't know how it's gonna work. Maybe you can get, due to these new laws that they put out, maybe they still, they should be, shouldn't have all these trees hanging in the woods and all this other stuff that they're talking about that you can't do and can do. It's actually hazard in some places. That's just my thought.
Put it down and go.
I'd like to see more of it done, because you can't depend on town help, because they start it, and then they gotta shut off something, and you gotta dig it up, and you gotta replace it, and you gotta do this and that, and then, you know, it's never gonna get done that way.
How far down does Proctor go on Gorham Bridge Road?
All the way to the bridge.
But I thought that plot that we mow isn't even ours, and they just do it, the town does, out of courtesy.
Oma owns that piece.
Oma owns that piece?
Yeah. Trying to keep the intersection clear.
Right, okay.
But they do a finished job.
Do we own half the bridge?
Yes.
Yep, we own half of it.
I think, I think the town ride is in the middle of the creek.
Yeah, that's what I always thought.
I have a, if you ever want to see it sometime. I filmed the old bridge, and then when they took it down and put up the new, and how they did it and everything, it would be... Of course, there's only one thing wrong with the movie. This first time I got the camera, I'd be walking along, forget to shut it off. Two things look a little, little wild, but then I start over again, so it's okay, but...
So do you think it's mostly on Gorham Bridge the trees? Because I don't really notice trees like on the normal street, you know, main streets through Proctor.
Main Street's got one that I know of.
West Road could use a...
West Road could use some. There's quite a lot of it in town. Uh, Gorham Bridge Road is worse. There's even a few up where I live. You can go through every street, and next year, it's gonna be another foot or two out, and it's gonna have to be cut anyway, some way. I, I'm just thinking, and...
Well, this is a good time to bring it up, Ray, because we're gonna be starting budgets, and... Maybe we can see what we could add to that. We'd have to hire a company to do it with...
You'd have to hire the company, or you can't hire a couple of good chainsaw men.
I think the liability would be a problem.
Yeah, either hire someone contract who has insurance, or hire them as town employees, and then our insurance would cover it. But you've got to be one way or the other.
Yeah.
Can, can you make a list of, like, priority trees, so we know when we're budgeting what we're looking at? You know, are we looking at six trees, or 60 trees? And where?
Well, there's, to be cut down right now, there's quite a few. I'd say probably a dozen or better that have to come down. And that's part of the, part of the work, you know?
Let's see, what we're taking down are dead.
Mm-hmm.
Dying. And what Ray is talking about is the stuff...
Hanging over the road.
The only tribes of it is when a tractor trailer goes through.
Exactly, yeah. How are we doing with elm trees, uh, not elm, ash trees?
Ash, we got only one that needs cutting right now, that I know of. I can't really, uh... Only what I can see from the road. I only know of one. And then there's several other trees that gotta come down that they're working to do.
How about the cedar hedges there on Gorham Bridge Road?
It's in the, uh, request for bids that Ray and I went through Friday, and then John is supposed to stop in Cedar Moore, and we'll put it out, so you'll open it for the next meeting, but cleaning that whole hedge out of there.
Is that ours?
Yeah. In the right way.
Is it?
On Town Ride.
We didn't plan it, but...
No, I know.
It's in our right way.
The land order has said, take him down, just like we took the rest of them.
Oh, so we took those other ones up, going up the street, okay.
Pleasant Street.
Yep.
If this is one, a road, tree warding road, you start from center and go out about 22 feet.
Yep.
And that's all Town Ride away.
Right.
All right, thank you, Ray.
Yeah, thank you, and we'll...
Appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, we'll...
Well, it just looks like it's getting worse. The rain we had last year and everything, boy, everything grew good. I brushed off some trees up on the side of the woods, and they're all growing right back this spring. You know, they grew right back because of the water. It don't get better, gets worse.
Did you have another item you were gonna ask about? Flagpole?
Oh, yeah. Can I have that flagpole that used to be in front of the office?
I believe we have a new one to replace it, correct?
Yes, yes. It's laying across the patio.
What's everybody think?
I, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't?
No.
Okay. I'll pick it up tomorrow, and I'm gonna start setting it up, get another flag up in town.
Don't get a ticket for hauling it away.
I'm gonna put it up to Elsie's, right on the bank, where you can see it up there. As I think I am, I haven't asked her yet.
You need her permission before you need ours.
Yeah, before you take it, we have to have a signed piece of paper from her okaying, yeah.
You know what? I won't do it.
Sure, no, I, I don't think...
Thank you, Ray.
Yes, thank you so much.
Do you want a piece of paper?
Sure.
You can have one set of those if you want.
Okay, Ray, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay. No invited guests.
Oh, I have one question before you leave, Ray. When is this tree warden meeting? When is this tree warden meeting that you speak of?
I don't know.
Okay, let us know.
Wilber knows, I think. Don't you?
I haven't seen a notice on it.
Oh, it's in Rowland Herald.
Is it the Herald?
Yeah. I didn't cut it out.
I will check on it.
Maybe I can find the paper.
Yeah, I'm sure one of us could go with you if you'd mentioned it.
I think it's a two-day, I ain't sure.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
Yeah, it's a, you get pizza for lunch, and...
The last one that I went up with you, we went up to Randolph.
That's right.
Yeah.
I think it's probably same place.
Yeah.
The college.
Yeah. And it's, it's educational.
That was interesting.
There's, there's so many things you don't know until you go up there to one of their meetings, like lawsuits, and light waves, and all that stuff, you know?
Not today.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
There you are.
Take care, thank you. Uh, good stuff.
The papers are complete, I believe, and it's nice.
Yes, everything looks really nice.
I like it.
They got the culvert in, and... Everything...
Is this on Olympus?
Yeah, yes.
And Ormsby, and there was a piece of Williams that got washed out there. Pleasant Street.
Pleasant Street.
Yes, I saw that.
Looks good.
Yes.
But we can't pave roads in front of select board members. It's just bad publicity. So, Carrie won't get a road paper.
I'm good with that. Just promote speed.
Slow the traffic down.
Just want to remind everybody about the Fall Festival, too, on Saturday.
Looking forward.
Hopefully, the weather will cooperate.
Yes.
Yes.
Fireworks at night.
Yeah.
Are they better in touch with you?
Yes.
Okay. Because I haven't heard from them, but I assume...
I know, I talked with her, and we set up a time and everything that they'll be down, and probably second meet with them, so...
Good, good. Is it, might be a good time to apply for a flyover for Memorial Day with the new F-35s in Burlington?
Oh, that'd be nice, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Might be good to do that early.
Start playing too early, yeah, definitely.
Before they get stacked up, you know? They'll have some extra ones available by then. Yeah, for, yes. Just a, just a thought.
Right, okay, no, thank you.
Okay. Highway Department.
Well, you've got a list of what we have accomplished. John was on vacation last week, so we just had two people, and John made the workload something that two could do together. But the big items on there was the culvert up on Olympus Road, and we did have a roadkill. We got a water leak on Holden, which we haven't taken care of yet, because we had other things we had to get done. It's, it's in the service line. And the millings from the Ormsby Avenue went down Elm Street to use to fill potholes, but, so... Just slowly putting all that reclaimed stuff down there.
On the dirt portion?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Beautiful.
Recycling, yes. I know people use it on their driveways, it seems to work well.
Okay, we got our first four loads of salt delivered, so we're starting in. Uh, there's a road commissioners meeting tomorrow with Brandon, where they're gonna talk about salt, and a little bit more, because the concern last year was it bulked up a little bit. And they told me that they've got buildings built, so they can store it inside down in Albany. Cargill did give us a price, 76, the same price that we got from Appalachia. And I asked John, you know, after tomorrow's meeting, if other people are talking about the moisture content and the bulking, is there a reason to jump to Cargill? Other than that, he was happy with their delivery last year. They showed up whenever he wanted them.
As far as I'm concerned, whatever John wants is fine.
Yes.
So, they were the low, so-called low bidder when the state went out. And I don't know what Burlington is doing, whether they're gonna go with it or not.
I don't know who Rutland, I know Rutland went with them last year, and they had the same issue with the clumping.
What I said to John, he's going to that meeting tomorrow, so he should have some more answers when he comes back.
I don't know who they went with this year as well.
Will, do you think they'll have time to correct the road a little bit down there for the, going around the lab building?
Oh, you mean, yeah, you mean...
Now, it's a wastewater point.
W wastewater point, to get, to make access. They're coming in now with, with long trailers.
Yes.
Rather than triaxles.
Yes.
It's a little bit more difficult. John was, when he was measuring stuff out, he was looking at triaxles, and being able to back into it and dump it. Down to the abandoned manhole on Field Street. Somebody wanted the permit to build a porch. There was a manhole there. Bob Coons called us, and Dan and Harry went over and checked it out, and it is truly abandoned, so we're gonna pull the cover and fill it with sand, and he's, Bob's given him his permit. Uh, we had that valve exercising program, and some of our guys did flagging for them, especially when they were on Route 3 and all the way through.
Did they get most of the valves, or...?
No, they got about 70 out of 170. But they did, and they found two that didn't close, but Harry and Dan went out and exercised them some more and got them to close, so... So we've got a punch list of things that need to be addressed. Most of it is just the boxes.
Yeah.
Good.
I saw that black bear, that was hit.
Yep. Okay, Volsha, I've got it on the agenda later, so we'll talk about it when we get down below. Tree down at Forest Road that they couldn't find. Town ride morning, all of us winterizing the pool, pulling the docks, the highway crew takes care of all of that. Scrap metal, we got a check for $86.32. Some of the scrap metal. Fire extinguishers, Green Mountain Fire. Their schedule is supposed to be August. Ryan emailed me that the one at the rink had not been updated since last August. I got hold of Green Mountain, they apologized, they were up here last week. Everything has now been checked and with new tags on it. Signs, we got a big load of signs coming in. John was talking to me today, we got a blind, sign up for a person who's blind on Merchants, yeah, Market Street. We got the crosswalk signs, we got another 25 mile an hour signs for the north end of Route 3. So you'll, you see, they've been putting up new signs around. And the rink, they went over and cleaned up around there, because they had an event going on, and as I say, John was on vacation.
How's the remodeling going over there, do you know?
I haven't been in since last, uh...
Looks good.
Does it?
Last week, sometime, whatever.
Yes, maybe, yeah.
Waiting for the countertops, I think was the last thing to be done. And then put the floor back together. Holden Avenue Water Leak, they gotta get back to West Street Sewer Service. We still haven't got it to the, that's the house. Josh Webb is gonna be, just bought, so, or he's closing on 30th, so... Risk a sense but response, John is putting together the list that we saw and getting answers to the questions. Some of them are taking care of, some need a little bit more, so... And firewood, as much as they hate to go cut and split, that's on the agenda.
Thank you. Do you want to speak on the tool, the Bobcat?
Bobcat. About four years ago, he made a request to buy a attachment that goes on the Bobcat, which is a sweeper, but it also sweeps into a bucket. And then you can lift it up and dump it into the Ormtong, or the, maybe even to 550.
For spring cleanup.
For spring cleanup, summer cleanup, and every cleanup.
Yeah.
Make it quicker, easier, and more often when they get it. Uh, there's two proposals in here, one with a curb brush, and the other without a curb brush. And the curb brush would be, would save another man, wouldn't have to sweep the stuff away from the curb so that the broom could pick it up. So we're requesting a approval of a $6,147.66 from the Highway Fund to buy the sweeper with the curb brush.
You have the, John has the money for it?
It's in the Highway Equipment Fund.
Yep.
Which still has got about $100,000 in it. Even after we bought the 550.
Excellent, yeah.
Take a motion, the...
What's that?
They've talked about that in, every year in the spring now.
Yeah.
Good.
Big thing is that one person can go out and do this alone instead of having to have three people and two pieces of equipment.
So, we should have a motion on that, then?
I would, I would hope so, otherwise, otherwise, Celia won't give me the money.
Right, yeah, so, motion to buy the Bobcat with a gutter brush.
I'll make the motion to accept a quote on the Bobcat with a butter brush. Butter brush. Gutter brush for the $6,147.66 taken out of the Highway Equipment Fund. Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, FEMA.
FEMA, you'll be in town on the 2nd of October to help us do our next update. All the work is complete, so that will take care of that item. Now it's just a matter of getting our request for reimbursements in. As I say, this is one of the nicest guys I've ever met from FEMA, who is very helpful, and he does all the data entry. He doesn't want me touching his, his portal at all, because I'm gonna mess it up if I do, and then I'm gonna lose money.
Well, that's great, that's good to hear, somebody that goes above and beyond, and...
Yes.
So, question, before we get to that, do we have a purchasing policy?
Yes.
Okay, because they'll want one.
That's why I come in for, well, anything out of the reserve funds has to be done by the select board anyway.
Yes.
Yeah, they just want that policy.
Well, I sent it in to them, yeah.
Yeah.
It needs to be updated, because it's got $500 for, enough a quote.
It's not much today.
No, it's not.
Hey, speak of the devil.
Yes, oh, you're late.
Order it quick.
Yes.
Oh, you got the pictures of it?
We all approved, we were all good already.
I just got the pictures about 20 minutes ago, and I said, ah.
Now we may not approve it after we see the picture.
Yes. So, it isn't gonna be red colored?
I can paint it red. I got a spray can.
So, Stan, maybe we should put the purchasing policy, updating that on the next agenda, so that it just gets done?
That works easier to do than the traffic one.
Don't you?
Yeah, must be.
Because they all kind of look the same.
Yeah, great.
I was vacation, John.
Yes.
Carrie coming at you.
We just got the roof finished.
Anything else for Highway that anyone has? You guys been doing a great job, and...
Yes.
Everything looks great. Motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I don't think we've got a...
I got nothing special.
You show, no?
This is, Simon's is once a month.
Oh, yes. Okay, we get into our Contract 6 Award.
Okay, just for information, I put on your table tonight the, all of the, the bid summary with all the bidders on it, because what New Boys and King furnished was just one, and Munson's bid on it. What you've got is the whole package that New Boys and King sent us. And if you have noted, of course, is that they declared two of the contractors out of three as being non-responsive, and therefore their only recommendation was to the one bidder, Munson, that was responsive, and they furnished all of the stuff related to them. One item in their letter on the second play, page, he suggested that we have our attorney look at it. Oops, not the first page.
And he did.
And so he has looked at it. You have a confidential report from him. And so he has looked at it, you have a confidential report from him, uh, what I would suggest was that we take it up at executive session at the end of the meeting, and see what direction we'll go. Alan will be here, so he can respond to questions. And even if he comes early, he's only gonna charge half an hour. So that's a lot of paper in there. What I gave you was everything that New Boys and King gave us, uh, to go forward.
Okay, um, and then we get to the, the delinquent accounts.
The delinquent accounts.
Oh, this is great.
You got three separate reports that probably I could do all in one. Uh, the first one is those with agreements, and of course, we've added quite a few. Uh, who is paid up? We have one correction in there. Uh, Dave Carmen has paid, so there was only one that is, needs to be shut off, and that's Laura Thompson, which I would look to John, we've done it before, I think. Uh, she doesn't answer the phone, and she doesn't pick up mail.
I know. And you said Carmen was paid?
Yes, so you could correct that one off. Uh, the new ones you'll see started with their September payments, and some of them, even the, who were here two months ago are still stretching out, so. In that regard, we are in good shape as far as the people with agreements. The next report is the shut-off schedule, and of the September sixteenth shut-offs, everything was done with the exception that I need to visit, uh, one, or Bridge Road, because this is the one where three services are on one curb stop. My intent is to go up and essentially remind her that she's delinquent, and since she is on, three other houses on the service, is our only remedy is a tax sale. So, we'll see whether I gain anything from that.
I'd tag along with you in one second.
You happy to? And have some muscle behind me in case...
Well, I don't expect the muscle, but there's two people sometimes, it's not a bad idea.
So that got us through the September sixteenth, we're down to the September twenty-third shut-offs. Uh, we've had two come in, three come in with, uh, two come in with agreements, so we do have a list to go out to the guys this week to get shut off. And then Ben asked for a complete rundown, so the third report is a complete report of the, uh, delinquent accounts as of July thirty, and how much they owe, so that's, what I'm saying is that I think I could put all of these three into a single, if you're willing to look at a bunch of pages with skips to it, rather, I mean, I've been sorting them by value, and now if I put them in here, they're just gonna be wherever they show up in the list.
I have a question, like, on the first report that we have, there are several on here that weren't on here last meeting, and they show current as of September.
Yeah, those are the ones who just signed agreements last week.
Okay, so weren't they delinquent in July and August then?
July, August is, that's this year, they're not delinquent yet until June thirty.
Right, so, I'm just, so, I'm just curious why they weren't on last week's, last report?
Because they didn't sign an agreement at the last report. This is just the list that...
So this is only agreements, not, not the delinquent ones?
These are the people who have signed agreements.
Okay, so, okay, I get it.
Not necessarily everybody's delinquent.
So the September check being current, is that they signed an agreement then?
They signed an agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I didn't realize that either.
Yeah, so, but, you know, as I say, I think I could meld this into a single report, which will be the whole list of the, all the delinquent accounts as of next meeting, and then put the other columns in for, has agreement, current with, current with agreement.
Yeah.
Might I suggest, to save paper, uh, anybody under a thousand dollars, we don't need to see?
I can't sort it that, well, I can't sort it that way, but then it comes up by total dollar. If you don't mind seeing it by total dollar, I could try sorting it that way.
Well, I don't know if that's gonna cut down an awful lot of paper.
I'll print it, I'll print it on both sides. We'll cut it, yeah, yeah, 'cause what is there, six pages, seven pages of the total?
Even if you just did an Excel spreadsheet and put their name, you know, what they owed.
Well, no.
Current.
Celia downloads it and sends me the accounts receivable.
Okay.
It's in, it's in an Excel spreadsheet for that.
Oh, it is in Excel, okay.
So, so I could manipulate, I, yes, I could sort my dollar value.
'Cause that way you probably just get more on there and just be easy to check different parts.
But then I add the other, other columns on, which whatever she gives me, I add the other columns, and cut into new information.
Right.
Form.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for Water?
Yes. Did we find out why the fire hydrant down on Patch Street is bad?
It wouldn't flow. We don't know why it doesn't flow, because the water, the wastewater treatment plant has got plenty of flow.
Yes, um, we move that up on the list just a little bit. Now, now the fire department, if there was a fire right there, they would remove the bag and use that hydrant in an emergency.
I don't think they get any water out of it, that's...
Or they're not getting any water out of it.
Flow at all?
That's my understanding.
Oh, okay. I guess it doesn't meet flow.
Yeah.
I thought it was a couple gallons short. It's broke, okay.
It, it was more than not having five hundred gallons a minute at twenty PSI.
All right, now I understand.
But I will put it on the hit list, yeah.
Okay, Board of Sewer Commissioners, motion to go into Board of Sewer Commissioners?
I'm moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, the old managers report at this time, we covered delinquent accounts, so, anything additional for the Board of Sewer Commissioners? Okay, okay, I guess we can return to the regular Select Board items of standing committees. Uh, Park and Rec, Judy, any?
Um, so the skating rink is coming along really nice, they've done a lot of work inside, they also did some work outside in terms of, um, removing wires that were really bad um, over the rink, and then they're looking to remove some trees there, 'cause there's some really bad trees and limbs hanging. Um, and I didn't know if, I'll leave Beaver Pond, the part, the party on Sunday, the Beaver Pond, who's ever, you can do that if you want. I didn't, 'cause I didn't know if Ray...
That's Tom.
Tom.
That's Tom.
Oh, Tom.
Beaver Pond?
Uh, yes, uh, Bruce Boucher is before me, but...
Oh, no, you're next, Beaver Pond.
No, you're next.
Okay. Right, um, yeah, there's a picnic for, you know, the workers, Select Board members, planning commission, families, kids, husbands, wives, uh, just to say thank you for all the work, volunteer work that was done this summer, and it's too bad our exalted chairman left, but he could do a better job than I could, but, uh, he's pretty proud of that over there.
And it's the day after Fall Festival?
It is, it is, so it's a busy weekend, and I hope we ordered good weather.
Yeah, we get it first, so. Wow. We'll give you the love, John.
Uh, and our, Beaver Pond work has ended for this year, so, and it will be...
Well, one thing, we have to pull the dock.
Yes, there's a little full work, but I mean, no more clearing, that'll be started next spring again, and, continue.
Yes, uh, the, the only other thing regarding that is, uh, I have it here somewhere, the...
That's later down.
Oh, that's right, that's, yeah, page two.
That's, that's about the page two.
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, okay, Personnel Committee, um, I'll be getting in touch with people on that shortly, so. Planning Commission, Tom?
Planning Commission had a busy September meeting with a couple of big permits and hearings, and, uh, everything went well, and, uh, we wish the new, uh, the new business at the Marble Company Office well. About it.
Uh, Fire Department, and that was Ben, and he's not here, so we assume there's no problem there. I'm sure if there was something serious, Josh would be in touch with us. Uh, Regional Solid Waste, Carrie?
So, the Solid Waste District is looking for a new manager. Jim is retiring, and I believe another accountant, because her name slips my mind right now. I don't know why that is. She's retiring as well, so there'll be some big changes there in October, that's soon.
They work out of the, the big building there.
Yes, they work out of the big building. The only other thing is the hazardous waste day that's coming up in Proctor. Everything else is pretty quiet there.
And electronics.
What?
And electronics.
Oh, yes, and electronics.
They did come around with the, the truck that grabs, uh, last Wednesday, Wednesday before, on our street, so I was surprised to see that, we've only seen that like twice and...
From the Solid Waste or Casella?
Yeah, well, it's Casella's, but, uh, it was, uh, interesting.
Yeah, um, we wanna talk just quickly about, uh, having some staff down there for...
That's the, I'll be agenda later on.
Oh, okay, I, okay, I'll be...
Stick to the agenda.
Yes, yes, jumping ahead here. Okay, Regional Transportation, uh, just got an agenda and going over the bylaws on the twenty, or meeting on the twenty-sixth, and, uh, they posted their meetings for last June, so, uh, a lot of catching up to do on, on regional transportation, so hopefully you'll have, uh, a lot of information, uh, next time around. Regional Planning, Carrie?
I missed that, I had a prior commitment, so I missed that one.
And Ben's not here for the marketing. Okay, additional items, um, everybody's signed the orders in your packet, there's a, the league is looking for a couple of people, uh, they have a couple of openings on the, the board up there at VLCT for the insurance, uh, trust and what have you, and I thought I might put in an application, but, you know, I, I doubt that they'll, uh, want that, but, uh...
Gonna put it in.
Good for you, yeah.
Yeah.
Give a shot and see.
So they'll say and, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
But it would be nice if the board would endorse his, or submit his application, rather than him submitting it himself.
Thank you, so.
Agreed.
Who, second did it pass?
Second, yeah. All of the favor?
Aye.
Okay. Transfer Station Dump Duty.
We're gonna be open from...
Twelve to five?
Five.
Kyle and Paul are lined up to handle the heavy work at, at the station.
Yeah.
I'll get the roll-offs, so the big chore for the Select Board is collecting the money.
Yeah, I'll be around that afternoon, I probably won't be there all afternoon, but certainly put in a few hours.
I think I might be there too now.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll plan on a mask being there, yeah. Oh, do they, uh, somebody asked me, and I wasn't a hundred percent sure, do they take, uh, pressure treated lumber?
Of course, pressure treated lumber goes in the dumpster, dumpster.
Dumpster, not in the burn pile.
Not in the burn pile.
Yeah, I thought, so, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure, I'll get back to that.
And we'll be, we'll be using the same price?
Yeah, they, they're in the announcement, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And anything over a large load is your discretion, that's three times a pickup, right?
Yeah. Yeah, well, they come in with a tandem trailer, uh, go from there. Volsha Inspection?
Volsha Inspection, we had an unannounced Volsha inspection of all the buildings in the town, town-owned buildings. Uh, we have not received the re, the report back from them, uh, but then, and they will come back down and do an exit interview with John and myself there. John led them around, he found some things that, verbally, but what they'll put into the report, we haven't seen yet, so, as soon as we see it, we'll go from there. One item that did, and it prompted me to put the next item on the agenda, was our safety meetings we were negligent in, as far as having organized safety meetings once a week, once every two weeks, or whatever, and also some of the programs. Uh, so, I expect that they will do it. In anticipation of that, I, there used to be a Health and Safety Policy Admission, if a Health and Safety Committee. Uh, many towns have Health and Safety Committees. There was one here in two thousand ten, uh, this was on your desk for, in your packet to review, to see if you want to re-establish the Health and Safety Committee. This is a draft, and would accept any comments, whether tonight or, or before the next meeting.
Do you think it's a good idea?
I think it's, well, two things, yes. Are we gonna save any lives from it? I don't know. Are we gonna get someone else looking at it? What this has made up of the committee is a member from the Select Board, Public Works Director, Chief Operator of Water, Wastewater, which is Chris, uh, myself, and someone from Park and Rec, and anybody else, other committees we have. The big issue is to get documentation. I mean, one thing is that a lot of the guys from the Highway Group, and also Wastewater, have gone to workshops, seminars, but it's not in the book that they participated. Uh, for about a two-year period, we had a Friday safety meeting at the Highway Department, and that's when the league was furnishing us a program. The candidate, John, says he's got another outsource for a program, so that, yeah.
I think it's a good idea. We actually, I just started one in the city last year, and I think it helps also, ours was a lot focused for workers' compensation, 'cause there were too many accidents that shouldn't have happened, um, so that focus, but I think it also benefits our insurance as well. You know, if we reduce the rates of, you know, lost property or workers' comp, and you have a safety committee in place, then they kinda look at you a little bit.
We could be the perfect Select Board candidate.
No, you, you, you will note that this is a Health and Safety, it is a Health component also, which means that we all meet at the Tower Clerk's office at eight o'clock and do half an hour calisthetics.
Yeah.
Aerobics. Yeah, I could use that.
But, you know, I put it in here, we had one for a while, think about it, and get back to any modifications.
All right.
If you'll permit.
I see that they're, the one that hears, uh, you know, first Wednesday of the month at nine o'clock.
Yeah, you got a schedule in order.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, and, uh, these, uh, the signatures are...
Yeah. Couple of them are recognizable.
Yeah, a couple old signatures on there.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Uh, risk assessment, and I go back to the stairs the next time I mention, so.
She closes a copy of the letter that went to the property order, closes a copy of the letter that came back from the property order, what she is asking, uh, to...
She doesn't want to do anything.
Yeah, she would like us to do it.
Appropriate, to ask her, she doesn't, you know, want to have to do it. So, it's the board, since the board said, please do it, the board could, uh, do it. And by, and we'll have John pick him up as soon as I call, which is the end of September, I'll get hold of her.
And this is one going into the water, right?
Yeah.
And from what I understand, the state said when they were here that if that was ever removed, then it could not be replaced. It's not something that they have, um, the ability to do as a homeowner.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'd have to get a permit.
Cause it's not on their plan.
Permit from the, you know, from the owners.
Plus a permit from the town.
Yeah, a permit from the town, the owners.
Yeah.
So, the motion would be to withdraw the request that she addressed the problem. And then we'll, and then we will take care of it.
I, I don't think it's a huge deal, is it, John?
So, we have a motion on to remove the stairs.
Or just to requo, draw, withdraw the request.
Well, okay, withdraw the request.
Okay. I make a motion to withdraw the request.
Then put that on your list, Josh. Yeah, thank you. Uh, town office, the front wall.
I found another picture, so I put that in there too.
Yeah.
It looks so different.
You wouldn't know a year on that, would you?
Eighteen eighty-five, I believe.
Yeah.
If, the book is, it's down at the bottom of the picture, which didn't get copied.
Yeah. That's, uh, the whole landscape there is different.
Yeah, the old wooden stairs.
Yeah, and then the road is way lower than...
Yes.
Way low. There's still some, uh...
But the, but the walkway is exactly the same as it is there.
Yes, yeah.
And even the old one, look at the, isn't that the old stairway on the back?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the old wooden stairs. That's been there a long time.
Yeah.
So, I wonder if the off, the office building must have been up there or something.
Well, I think the, I'm, uh, I don't think it shows that.
No, you can't really see it. It probably wasn't as big and it was probably wooden back then.
Yeah, I don't remember where the actual office buildings in, you know, in the history that I, so.
Do you know what the little shed is there, Stan?
I don't know. I was gonna guess it's an outhouse, but...
Little livery stable for the town manager's horse there.
Yeah. So, uh, the, um, the latest email from the Wright Construction is that they, the, their subcontractor will be here, uh, next week.
And I did, I did email him to ask when it was gonna be done.
Yeah, yeah, when's the deadline? Cause this keeps dragging on. This is two weeks now that we waited for him to come and do this portion.
Yeah, the completion date is October thirty-first.
Yeah.
Okay.
By contract.
All right, I'm keeping that date.
She's gonna break his other hand if you don't.
It better be done. Because I will consider that for any other Wright Construction bids that they do not finish on time.
Okay, uh, anything? Uh, any updates that, that I'm aware of?
The only thing is, I put, I put the one oh six report in here. The photographs are here if you wanna look at them. They're pretty ugly.
Yeah.
I mean, the pictures are pretty, but the conditions are pretty ugly.
Yes.
So, that, uh, but that has been submitted. Uh, the only thing left to submit for the application is the minutes of tonight's hearing. And once that's in, then the application's complete. Uh, and I think I told you, the last meeting or board before is that this does not have to go before the board. It is issued by the commissioner based on recommendations from the staff. So, once I get it in, then they can do their review and submit it to the commissioner for approval. And I'm still getting good vibes, vibes from them.
Good, yeah, good, great.
One of the requirements is the fair housing workshop, and I believe we have a volunteer that will go to that. Judy?
Yes, I'm going tomorrow.
Good, thank you. And our design agreement, construction agreement?
Well, this is a proposal from NBF and, uh, Vermont.
Engineering.
Engineering for it, and that the last page is the cost estimate that we have been carrying through the project. It shows engineering and architectural at thirty-three thousand. If you add what Ed is presented plus what, uh, electrical, mechanical, it's considered to be less than that amount, so. And I have asked for a job description for the clerk of the works, so that, you know, what, what the, what somebody might expect from it.
Okay. Just the first page, second paragraph or sentence. I do have concerns that this project may come in higher than initially budgeted. That scares me a little bit.
I'm moving on that.
We have been fighting for this for so long, so many years here, I guess we'll keep moving forward.
Yeah, that, that doesn't surprise me, uh, at all, so. The bill, you know, the, you know, we never had a real price on the addition and lift and stairs and moved and... So, it's, it's gonna be, uh, gonna be higher. I mean, there's no way that...
And we had, we had a good estimate of the addition, what it was at the front of the building.
Yes.
Wright gave us a, a estimate on that. But now that we've moved it to the back of the building, will it change? And it's larger than it was before.
Addition, so.
So, all we could do is go out for bid and find out what it is and what this agreement for is for.
Correct.
Bidding and, and construction. So, if you approve that plus, uh...
If it goes over budget, where's the money coming from?
If it goes under bu, over budget, then you go back for a special town meeting.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, because...
Or getting in, we could try and cut something somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could negotiate a final, final price.
I'm certainly not suggesting we cut downstairs, cause that was, you know, what we wanted to do and from the beginning was...
Yeah, that other thing was, uh, like thirteen by fifteen or something, and this one is thirteen by twenty. The, the structure, so it's gonna be, you know...
A little nicer, yeah.
We'll see what happens.
If you would approve NBF's agreement, it also could occur with the electrical, mechanical.
Motion to go through the NBF agreement. And what else?
The electrical, mechanical, but it's, I don't think you have that in your packet. I don't have it in Bernie.
I see a lot of engineering. I don't see much for, uh, let's see.
Yeah, we're at service at nine thousand for them and eleven.
Yeah, nine thousand two hundred possibly, yeah.
Last page, or where are we?
Yeah.
On page two of the, of engineering services, which is in about four pages in.
That's nine thousand two hundred dollars.
Four, okay.
And NBF was eleven thousand five hundred, so you're at the twenty thousand, forty-one thousand, twenty thousand seven hundred for the two of them. Which is less than the thirty-three, although we have spent some money to date for the work that we did to get where we're at, so.
Yeah.
Motion to move forward.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye, and we'll keep an eye on this as a couple of...
Think we can do.
Can I ask one question about the new, is the exterior part of the new addition, what do you do with the marble that is on the fire department?
They just called for smooth marble. I haven't seen a detailed proposal for that.
So, when would that? Because I'm, I'm sure we all recall the problems they had with that building. And then how do you go back and redo the work because the fire department is falling?
Now, the only part, this marble is the, just the bottom portion.
The rest will be clapboards.
The, yeah, clapboards. And the marble to fill in the old doorway will come from the marble that comes out from putting in the new doorway.
Yeah. Ah, okay, junk vehicles.
Junk vehicles. We still have twenty-six fifty-one. Each street I've asked to be ticketed. The other two are new ones that you approved and I sent out letters. No, you haven't approved it yet because we haven't got the sheriff's department report.
Right.
What you have is, is an email processing. They were concerned because they had for sale signs on them and how long do you do it? And I sent them back the ordinance, the paragraph, the order, thirty days of the date. And I have, I could show the date from emails from people saying, would you please look at this? And then my email to them saying, please look at that. So, I haven't heard back on the one at the, uh, East Street or the one on Center Street. Center Street has moved the vehicles off the front lawn and moved them out to the side, but they're still visible.
How about School Street?
That's gone.
Oh, it's gone?
They're gone for two weeks. That was gone within the two days of the limit.
Okay. That one on Gorham Bridge too has, is one that needs to be, that I notified you of, that's been for sale. It's been like two months at least.
Been for sale?
Yep. There's a truck. The, the same family that had, we've had twice gone after because they've had old car, unregistered, un, um, vehicles in there. They're the one, they have the covering over one of them.
Yeah, they, they screened it.
Now they have a truck there that's been for sale for like two months.
For two months? I haven't noticed that. Where I drive, right?
Really? Yeah, I mentioned, I raised it in the meetings.
You did? Forty-seven Gorham?
Uh-huh.
At Gorham, Gorham Bridge Road, the same word with it?
Yeah, yeah. Right at the end of Pleasant, like when you, where those cedars.
I don't, I know where you're at, but I, I'm afraid that I don't remember mentioning it. And I don't remember, I'm, I see...
I'll come back in minutes just to see if I...
No, don't bother. I'll take care of it. And then you have in here the junk vehicle ordinance that Carrie asked me to put in your packet. Have you had some comments, Carrie?
Well, so I'm not sure if it's gonna fit in this one or the grounds maintenance ordinance. But there's a lot of free items that tend to sit out a long time. And I don't mind if people put their free items out. It's just the length of time that they're out there. You know, obviously if your TV is out there and it gets rained on, nobody's going to take it. So, you need to take care of your TV. You can't just leave it by the road. There's, it's getting more of an, I see it more and more often. So, my question, I guess, was where does it fit in and do we put a limit on it, like ten days, two weeks, something?
Let me look at the other one. Yeah, I think you're right. It probably would fall under the grounds maintenance ordinance as opposed to the junk ordinance, because theoretically it's not junk.
Yeah.
Someone else's treasure. Kind of, kind of after it's been rained on, it's really junk, but...
It's usually a couple's specific...
There are, but there, it seems to be a growing...
Yeah, I've certainly...
A growing occurrence, I guess, and it's not that they put it out, it's how long it stays out.
Yeah.
You know, what's the, what's the point of, okay, it's no longer of any value?
Nobody wants it.
Correct.
It's a TV, they can go to...
The electronics.
Like, they can drop it off.
Right.
Uh, upon...
Gleason Road.
Yeah, for nothing.
Yeah.
Yes, there are options. I, I guess that's my other point.
You just don't wanna do it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, there's chairs around town that are sitting beside the road and...
Yes.
And, uh...
Beds, couches, chairs.
Let me see if there is anything we could do under the current ordinances, which you write. I think it's property maintenance, not junk.
Right, and I really don't wanna chase people all the time either, but if there was some direction that we could say, hey, look, and people are made aware, then maybe that would deter some of the people, some of the time.
We had a couple of incidences where I've been involved in conversations. That's, that stuff has removed.
Yes.
Well, it's a matter of reminding somebody, but if there's a barbecue at the end of Larry, Larry Lane, I don't know who, who it belongs to.
Correct.
And I don't think we wanna get into the habit of picking up stuff every time somebody leaves it out there.
We do not.
Cause then it'll just get worse.
Yeah.
You know, we open our dump twice a year.
We'll see if it shows up.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, we certainly don't want it there all winter long, uh, when we start plowing snow and, and all that. Whether we can make it a, you know, nothing out after November or something, then...
I'll have to think about it, I think, a little more in how to put it forth. Like I say, I have no problem with people doing it. I just have a problem when you leave it out there. It has absolutely no curb appeal and you have neighbors and sometimes your neighbors aren't very happy about it.
Yeah. So, uh, we've, we can, uh, look at these ordinances again certainly and if you can do a little on where that might fit in, Stan, that would be great.
Yeah.
The town manager's search, I've been getting some information from VLCT. So, that's been coming in. Let me try to get a packet together, uh, for everybody on the information that's come in in case, uh, somebody's missing something, so.
And I'm assuming those estimated costs too can probably come down depending on how far our search goes and stuff.
Yes, um, I would, I don't know, I'd like to keep it, uh, a little more local rather than go cross-country, uh...
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
So. Okay, um, traffic order?
That's just a reminder that I owe you something.
Okay.
Yeah.
My shoulder.
Yes, so, um, the budget schedule, anybody have any?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't think we need to have a meeting every day, every Monday of the month for, um, October, November. Um, that's just my personal opinion. I feel like we have so many more meetings than other towns or cities have. And I understand the importance of the budget, but I think last year, the way we did it, taking like a chunk at a time during the meetings was good. And then when it comes down to the narrowing it down, maybe have a meeting here and there. But I just think, I mean, I, I think this is extensive to have meetings every Monday.
Isn't this already on our, I think?
These aren't our board meetings, no.
Cause it, mine's on October seventh to twenty-first.
Right, but then our, that's not our board meeting.
So, you're talking in addition to our board meeting?
These are in addition. So, then we have a meeting the fourteenth, the twenty-first, the twenty-eighth?
Every Monday usually, yeah.
I just think that's a little... I just think that's a little too much.
But, uh,
I think I was reacting to the comments at the last meeting.
Oh, I know, you did do this last year, I know.
We should wanna do it at the regular meetings.
Right, Ben didn't want to, I know.
Well, and I kind of agree, cause it does kind of get long, so it's what of the agenda do you trim off once a month, so we have time to do this?
Uh, that's a very good, I think we could eliminate our committee, uh,
Right.
Some of our, yeah, other committee, uh, reportings, um.
Well, and a lot of our agenda is repetitive, it's things that are on the agenda that we don't need to discuss or do discuss. So it looks more extensive than it is sometime.
You know, do we, well, the other point is, do we need to do sewer and water every single meeting, can we do it once a month? And then.
During budget session, yes.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, maybe we can trim it down, but, you know.
I mean, like I said, I think if you, if you started a meeting and just said, okay, we're covering, you know, um, streets and highway tonight, you know, for the budget.
I mean, what, what I did was put the categories in.
Right.
In, in a sequence that I could manage.
Right.
Yeah.
The first, the first group of them are fairly easy to get through.
Cause didn't we do that last year though?
Yeah.
We put it into the
I gave you a bunch of them.
We weren't here like till
Right, that's what I think, if we trim down.
He, he's just, uh, Ben requested this and he, he did it, you know, just a suggestion.
Yeah, so let's see what we could, uh,
I mean, that's just my opinion, I just think too many meetings is.
Well, and I didn't, I don't think that Ben really meant that we had to have, but to chunk it in our current meetings maybe, and we'll take some of the things out, right?
Yeah, let's.
Or like I, like I think once we get narrow things down, we've got, you know, a draft, and we need to really finalize numbers and crunch them. Then you have a special meeting, so that's all you focus on.
That would make me happy, yeah.
Yeah, let's see what we can do to, uh,
I could do anything.
Yeah, well, yeah, but we don't wanna make your life difficult either.
No, I mean, I've gotta have to prepare all this stuff. The question is, how much of it do I dump on you at a meeting? And you could draw, I could dump that, that whole first section, and you could draw a line and say, we're, we're not, we're not gonna get into professional services tonight. But that first group is pretty easy to do. And that, and that's one night meeting. The tough ones are the fire department, Josh is gonna wanna come to that one. Uh, the highway department, John is gonna wanna come to that one.
Oh, he's easy.
Uh, swimming park and wrecks aren't too bad. And, uh, what I also put in is, this is what I have been furnishing people in the past from a narrative, and I just put in the legislative administrative to know what falls under the various items in the budget. And then the summary sheet that I've attached for each meeting, which shows the past three years, last, this year's budget, and then proposed next year's budget. Two years.
So, my other question is, when we do the budget, do we look at things that have happened in the past? Like when Irene came, were we prepared?
We don't.
We have anything, do we, we look at, cause it should be like a five-year chunk that we're looking at, what is the average? Instead of just like last year, we should be looking at more than last year.
We're looking, you're looking at three years.
Okay.
Two years, or two years of actuals have been this year's budget.
Okay.
Irene, we're not gonna budget for.
No.
Well, just, that was just an example of some things happen in sometimes we trend above budget, and why is it that we trended above budget? I think it's been accommodated for, but as long as there's a chunk that's not just last year, this year.
No.
Like a little bit more of that.
The narrative tries to describe what goes into it.
Yeah.
Into all of the items. And of course, then I use this narrative where I code stuff for, for payment.
Yeah.
Because then I know where the, uh, paper towels go.
Yeah. So.
And I think, I think the bottom line, the goal is, is to take this year's budget and make sure that the percentage increase isn't extremely higher than the budget before.
Yeah.
Well, Ray already, already asked you for two people for three months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To cut brush.
Yeah, would be nice, but.
But I'll, I'll have a number if you wanna do it, when we get to the highway one. So these are the kind of the grouping.
Yeah.
What I'll do is prepare more than what I think you could swallow at any meeting, and you could draw the line anywhere you wanna draw it. Uh, when you get to December first, then I may put the pressure on.
Yeah.
And it's not, I mean, and the, the last meeting we had last year was in January, which finalized all the numbers. And I went back and created the so-called tower beating, uh, reports that go into the tower report, and I did that first part of January during to get them in.
But, uh, yeah, as long as they don't run things, uh, too late, I, I can see that, you know, we have you know, we've got, you know, four meetings there, maybe we cut it down to, you know, two, uh, what have you, but.
Two special meetings?
Yeah.
Towards the end, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could.
Maybe we can do it that way, so.
Well, let's, let's try doing it in regular meetings.
Yeah, let's see.
Yeah, it works.
When I call Oracle, then we'll do something else.
Yeah, sure, certainly.
And I put the highway department last, because that's the toughest one to do.
Yeah.
And that's where you're gonna have to decide what you wanna pay, what you wanna sidewalks, what, what improvements you wanna do over and above the normal expenses of running the department.
Yeah. Okay, anything on the sheriff's department report that is something that we need to flag? Um, I, I had a couple of calls. Uh, could we arrange to have the sheriff over at Five Corners, um, when school gets out around three o'clock? You know, a couple of days, just to see how things are. I've heard some comments that it, that's pretty bad at right around three o'clock with the elementary school kids and traffic and the whole nine years.
I will fire off an email to Cogger and Webster saying visibility.
Yeah, and see what, uh, they can, you know, of course I go back to the old days when the school had the safety patrol and, and, uh, just, uh,
They still have patrol. But maybe next school budget, they can consider our transportation as
But, uh,
water feeding, cross lane guards.
Couple of people have brought that to my attention, there's been some close calls, so. Okay, uh,
Um, I don't like helping out, but long-term, that, that's a school problem, that's not our problem.
Right.
Same thing with the parking lot up there.
Yeah.
Not our problem.
And, uh,
Good timing.
Yes, boy.
Good timing.
Yes. Just a couple of quick things here, anything, uh, new or old for the board?
No.
Anything, uh, on the budget reports that are here, uh, on the table tonight? I know you haven't had a chance to really look at those, and, uh,
Nothing is unusual, except for the tower office, which I coded a number of the expenses related to the improvement project to maintenance. One was the asbestos study, we had to have done it in order to get the application in. And the other was some of the cost for drawings and expenses, so that one is, is over.
Yeah.
I may be transferring those to another account depending upon how the bids come out before the end of the year.
I had a couple of questions. Where are we with the lights being painted on the Marble Bridge and getting bids for that memorial to be cleaned?
Okay, yeah, memorial to be cleaned is on the back burner, cause I'm assuming you're looking at next spring.
Right.
Yeah.
To do it. Uh, the other one you talked about, a contractor to paint the light fixtures. And, uh, John and I haven't sat down, he was on vacation last week. That's the one that he's gonna do, but not when we're gonna do.
Vacation? Okay.
And the only other thing, you did get a call from, uh, Brad LaFaso on the
Oh, streetlights.
Yes, that's my other question.
If you'll notice, he's dig saved them already. Uh, and he said that he will have a queue here next week, putting together bases, the wiring. What he's concerned about is delivery of the actual fixtures.
Why is he concerned about that?
Because they were talking six to eight week delivery. So.
Well, that still puts us before Christmas.
Well, it's still pushing November first, which is our so-called deadline to get it done.
Yeah.
And I've got three more telephone calls to make to see if I can round up some more money. I mean, we essentially got it now, but I'll give other people the opportunity to participate.
That would be nice, yeah.
Picking is done before, you know, November first, that's good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, he's gonna have some cuts there.
Do you think you can be able to get there within picking and maybe some grass drawn again?
Good. Well, um, they have a motion to go into executive session to consider the acceptability of the bids for the construction work on contract six and six A. Given the premature general public knowledge on this matter would clearly place the town at a substantial disadvantage.
Bless you.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.